We have another cool house tonight. Thank you everyone for coming. It is 7:00 PM, March 24th, 2015. This is the Bartstown City Council. I want to thank everyone for coming and we'll get right to business. First item on agenda is recognize, a recognition of groups and individuals. And I would like to introduce our new Bartstown City Attorney, Tim Butler. Does anybody give a applause?
Thank you Mayor. If I could, if I can make a few comments, I wanted to share some things with the council.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And this is for the benefit of the council primarily. When, when the mayor approached me, and I wrote this out so they can get along with it. When the mayor approached me about being appointed city attorney, of course, I was honored, but I had some reservations. And before accepting the appointment, the mayor and I sat down and we discussed several things about how I would approach the job. I believe it's very important that I share these things with you all now in order to be open with the council and with the community. First, I hope to provide the city council with the quality of legal service and advice to which you've become accustomed. In my time in this community, there have been several excellent city attorneys, including Bruce Reynolds, Tom Donan, Shallen McCoy, and Bob Eaton, and perhaps others that I've forgotten. You've been blessed in that respect. I've got 35 years in government service of one kind or another. I have no experience, nor do I want to have any experience with politics. They are distinct and different concepts in my experience. My service is dedicated to the citizens and their representatives. Please understand that my legal opinion is just that, my legal opinion. You may like it or not, you may agree or disagree. It will be my best effort. My service and advice will be overwhelmingly based on my understanding of the laws that applies to the actions related to government and its complete and efficient functioning. That having been said, I must also answer to myself, my ethics, my conscience, and my faith. Sometimes I will know a lot about a subject, sometimes I'll know a little about a subject, and sometimes I'll just have to learn. I appreciate your patience. To me, being appointed city attorney means that I represent the city and the council as a whole, and perhaps in rare instances, individuals. I've always been mindful, but I will always be mindful of the whole. I believe that my service is best provided in an open environment, because I believe government is best when it is open to view, to view by all, to every extent possible. My method of operation is one of collaboration and not secrecy. And those of you all that have dealt with me here in the community over the years probably would realize that. My overarching philosophy then is one of trying to work towards finding common ground, reducing conflict, and trying to bring people together. In terms of government, I believe that it works best when it's working towards a common goal of serving the people, that service within the confines of the law that is binding on all of us. And with that, I'd just like to say thank you all for the opportunity.
Do you have any councilman questions? Thank you Tim. Welcome. It's a welcome to the family. The next is the Scout Troop 721. Where's your scout master at? Well, that's your first task. Let's go search and see who's up. Mr. Snow, would you like to come up here, please?
The floor is yours. So, we're Troop 721. We're chartered out of the First Christian Church, and they're working on the merit badge for citizenship in the community. So, they're here to learn what happens in a local government meeting for the city marshal.
You guys are welcome to stay as long as you like. And after the meeting, if you want to talk to myself or the council members, you're all welcome to it. The next item on agenda, number two, which is to receive input from the public in this way with the city business, city business only. And we'll start with Ed Ringo from Barton's. Yes, sir?
We're just here listening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Scott Wilson?
Thank you.
Okay. On the troop, Mr. Daniel Jones.
My name is Daniel Jones, and I'm one of the residents from the Maple Hill neighborhood group in Bartstown. And a lot of people have asked me, how do I know I'm from Maple Hill? So, I just wanted to explain that, because there's been quite a bit of confusion. In 2010, the Bartstown Active Neighborhood Delegation was formed, and Roland has been, I think, the leader of that, Councilman Williams, since the beginning. And they divided the city through this ordinance, divided the city into nine different divisions. The Maple Hill neighborhood is number eight in the division, and so that's how we came up with it. We start at the west side of Cathedral Manor, and we go up to Stephen Foster, and then we cross over to the St. Joseph's School, and it goes all the way back to Jones Avenue, starting at Jones Avenue, westward through that way, everything west is the Maple Hill neighborhood. So, basically why I'm here is, we've been working for two years amongst ourselves and with band, and more currently with the Bartstown City Police Department through a neighborhood watch. We now, in the past year, have registered the one and only neighborhood watch with Bartstown. So, that's an accomplishment that we've made. We have a Facebook page that we try to produce information for different neighbors and people in the city about what's going on in Maple Hill for many reasons. We have 208 followers at this point through that page, and there's a lot of activity. We've accomplished several of the goals we had set originally, but none of the large goals. We still have, the Bartstown City Police Department has registered the neighborhood watch, and we need to work toward soliciting money for the neighborhood watch signs. A lot of our area no longer has the signs. We'd like for them to have the phone numbers. It would be $200 to $300 tops for the city to produce these signs, and that's something that we need to work on that relationship. The other point is the ban of Bartstown Active Neighborhood Delegation. It meets twice a year now, and that's simply not enough for a neighborhood to be able to solve or resolve any of the problems. So, what we're here today to ask is that the city start looking at the process with neighborhoods, and how can we work with our neighborhood watch, with our local police department, as well as with the city government, to develop our neighborhoods, these nine different divisions that you guys have created, so that we can prosper, basically, and live in healthy, harmonious areas of town. Maple Hill, if you don't know where it is, it's literally the beginning of Maple Hill. It's two tenths of a mile from the old courthouse, so it's literally right in town. It's an extension of downtown, so that's the area that we're trying to develop. I've brought some handouts for you guys to look at. One of them talks about process, and that has a lot to do with you. So, you could take a look at that and somehow start developing procedures and process, so that as neighborhoods, right now, we've also brought our, the beginning of our squad analysis, and a lot of you have seen that, but I know you haven't, Pasha and Fred, you haven't. And so, if you take a look at that, that's the first step that we've created with planning and zoning. And planning and zoning have been phenomenal help with organizing this information and kind of guiding us on the direction that we need to go. I wanted to get it to you today, because I know that the budget's coming up. We have been clogging, all of you all, for the past couple of years about lighting, lighting, lighting. Pasha, have you noticed? You've been to a meeting, and John, you've been to several, and so I'd like for you to consider lighting in our area. We do have the jail in our side of town, which we see as a bit of a liability, and we would like for, to have that at least. You know, light is the, is what the darkness must fear. So, if we can shed light on a lot of the area of our neighborhood, we feel like we can create a better atmosphere. We also need to take a look at the west side corridor, because we're missing a "Welcome to Bartstown" sign. You are driving into Bartstown, and you're at Lydian Loop, and you can see St. Joseph's People, you can see Barton's to the right side, and you see a bridge that has rock and rubble and grub on each side of it, and there's no, there's nothing that says "Welcome to Bartstown." This is where the airplanes flying that bring the corporations, they're, the people looking to invest in Bartstown, and where the first thing they see coming from E-Town, sometimes 65, to the...
Excuse me, Ms. Jones, you have one more minute.
Okay.
Thank you.
And basically, what we would like you guys to do is think about whether or not you can provide lighting through this budget, and also start to look at how do we all connect the dots between the neighborhoods, the police department through the neighborhood watch, and then through the city government, through ordinances and codes, and the things that we need to get right as well. So, I appreciate your time, and feel free to send me emails, or call me, or ask me any questions, because I'd be more than happy to answer.
Go ahead and answer some of your questions. Somebody who's going to be helping by lighting is likely to, I will get with him. The police support for the neighborhood association. Councilman Buckman is head of the safety committee. I will get with him and Rick on actually giving support. And the sign, we'll look at the budget, and that will have to be engineering also. So, if you give me a chance, I'll get back with you on that, and I will give you a few days, and I'll make contact with him and see what we can work out.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll start with the floor. Anybody else who'd like to speak?
You want me to go now?
Yes.
I didn't know if I was under the Stephen Foster story.
Yes, because I just, remember, we didn't ask the remaining down here. But you have something else to add.
I'm ready. I'm Ellen Maker-Ben, and I'm the chair of the Stephen Foster Drama Association Board. And I wanted to thank you all for letting me come tonight to present on behalf of the Stephen Foster Drama Association. I've come tonight to ask for the city's regular, consistent, and yearly support. We have received monetary support in times of need in the past, and for that, we are grateful. But I'm here today to establish in your minds the beginnings of a partnership, one, in fact, that I see as long overdue. As you all, I'm sure, know, those of you who know me, know that neither my husband nor I are native Bartstown residents. We moved here in 2001, when Dan joined Conditions to Children directly after finishing his residency at daycare. To brag a bit, he was the golden boy of that pediatric residency class, and we were therefore going on a lot of dinners with partners at a lot of practices, we wanted Dan to join them. So, we were invited to Bartstown, and having never been here before, decided on a whim to come and enjoy a free meal. So, we had dinner at the Old Dag Woods with Dr. Smith, Tyler, Hedrick, Finley, and Block, and fell in love with the town. It was charming, the people were friendly, the downtown was working. It was and is an unusually quaint Kentucky town, and we were booked. So, every time I came back to prepare for our move that spring, during that original dinner, and talks with our real estate agent already looking for a home, and school visits, we were told we have the drama in the summer. And while we knew what people were talking about, Dan and I got a chuckle over it since having four baby girls. People always said the morning about the drama that was to come in our house. But I have come to love this shorthand term of Stephen Foster drama, because we do provide drama in this town every summer, and certainly not just on the stage. I know each of you were given an economic impact statement, and the information that I left here for you after speaking with the mayor a few weeks ago. But in a nutshell, we cause about $6 million worth of drama in this lovely town every summer. Not only do we attract tourists from all over the state, the country, and beyond, for people who come to the show and then spend their money on hotels and restaurants, but we also employ 107 summer employees, many of whom are from out of town, and who, with approximately $335,000, we pay them every summer, rent apartments, eat out, buy groceries, fill their cars with gas, shop, and spend in Bartstown. They also account for $1,674 in city occupational tax, by the way. But let's face it, Bartstown would not be Bartstown without all the drama. We are a nonprofit, providing a rich cultural experience for our citizens, a great economic impact in our town, and we want you to partner with us. We provide a discount to local residents every summer on any Stephen Foster ticket, and for one $10 night for the second show. By providing this discount, we subsidized over $16,000 in ticket sales last year. This is a loss of revenue to us, and while we love providing this discount to our locals, we need your help to continue. We'd like for the city to annually contribute $10,000 toward this effort. Current U.S. stats show that local government's support, local governments support the arts at a rate that is 2.6 times greater than the state government supports local arts. We receive $81,000 from the state of Kentucky every year. I think we can all agree that it is time for this body, our local government, to partner with what is truly the jewel in the crown of this beautiful town, the drama. Thank you. And you have packets and information, if you didn't get the economic impact statement before, it's in here, and there's a lot of other great stuff about our great association. So, give me questions, comments, I think you can take them, put them all over. Yes?
Ms. Dan, are you a line item in the county budget?
We are not, at this time. We'd love to be.
And have you approached him as well?
We have, and we are hoping that we will be this year as well. We are on it. Is that it? Thank you.
Anyone else? Welcome to the... Okay, we'll just move on down to the agenda for number three, bids, contracts, proposals, service requests.
The next is 3A, which is a discussion on Nelson County Dispatch and Recreation, which is, which I'll just make a brief statement about that. At the present time, myself and Councilman Hagan is working closely with the staff, the financial staff, to pins and grips with this interlocal agreement with the dispatch and recreation. And I'll get back with you when we have a conclusion, and I'll leave you a full report. Mike, anything else to add?
No.
Fred?
Just the final action we've been taking by this body, crafting something to bring to the city council for approval.
Absolutely. We won't decide anything, you guys will decide it. All right, thank you very much. B, be a change order number one to the Wicklun Boone Sewer Main Extension. And I ask Jessica, or Larry, with Jessica, okay? You'll read and explain the change order.
Thank you Mayor. So, the Wicklun Boone Sewer Main project near the, they're almost complete, but it has been near the end of the main, nearest to Highway 62. There, the existing pipe was shallow, and we proposed to lower and get some depth on our pipe. In doing so, in time to order the materials, we realized that the existing angle with which the lines were entering the manhole were so close that we couldn't get a drop manhole to improve our hydraulics that was in the system physically constructed. So, in an effort to remedy that situation, we basically ended up needing to bring in one of the two existing inlets, relay and come in at a separate angle and send additional manhole 90 degrees away, so that we could get all the pipes in there at the appropriate elevation in the structure and maintain a watertight system with our connections to the manhole and so forth. So, this additional work included an additional manhole and about 565 feet of 8-inch line. And the change order price came in reasonably at $4,813.28. Completion date is still set to be May 26th, and at this point, I would recommend approving that change order. It was still within our budget for the project, and it's something that needed to be done in order to get the project to completion.
Jessica, that, was that change, was that problem only recovered, recovered when you started digging, or was that something that was just missed in the initial engineering?
I would say it's a little bit of both. The precaster brought it to our attention when they were, because it had to be field verified, the actual angles in which it was coming out of the ground, because one of the lines is actually, has a bend in it under the, under the highway, which oftentimes they may not have. It's a little hard to see until you kind of get into it, and not being something you do every day as far as physically calculating what angle it can physically fit in. And two, whenever it's a drop manhole, which this thing created, you need an additional space, because there's exterior concrete poured on the outside of the manhole, and then they kind of let together too. So, just kind of the physicality of construction.
Is that extra footage, is that going to be done at the same dollar amount per...
It's not at the price that they've provided.
Right, but it's done at, what is the current price per foot?
They provided the price per foot based on the conditions that they had, which were probably shallower than what we had had in some of the other areas. So, this, this was a valid price for the footage. It was very consistent with the other pricing for the project. Some of it was actually less, because it's a smaller one. It's only an 8-inch one versus a 12. Do you have a question? I would then ask the council for a motion for approval of the recommendation.
Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve change order. Change of work order number one for the Wicklun Boone Sewer Main Extension for $4,813.28.
Discussion. Motion is to approve the change order for $4,813.25 for the addition of manhole, 65 to, 65 feet to 8-inch sewer. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Vote is five to one. Motion passes. Now, we're going down to number four, HRB, DRB, Planning and Zone Recommendations, and I ask Barbara to read the recommendation, please.
The Bartstown Historical Review Board met on Tuesday, March 17th, and reviewed COA 15-06, Demir Serik and Majah Cretho Serik and Mirima Cretho owner, to propose to install two bracketed signs and awning sign, paint, and add an outdoor cafe at 120 North 3rd Street. The recommendation was to approve the installation of the proposed signage, with the condition that the applicant get administrative approval for the brackets, provide style, size, and the layout for the outdoor cafe furniture.
The motion is to approve a COA 15-06. Are you going to let that, do you want that? Oh, I'm sorry, I am, so far. Our motion, we approve COA 15-06. Second, motion is to approve COA 15-06. All, any discussion? And that would be with the conditions set forth.
Right, with the conditions for the applicant, yes, and recommendation.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it? Pass five to six of us, sorry. Were you the only person? Okay, you want to see it?
It was tabled, so...
Number five, be correspondence. If there's no objection, we will adopt a motion to approve the Nelson County Community Planning 5K Run on 6/20/2015, and Main Street, Mardi Gras on 5/15/2015.
I'd like there's a discussion, let's second.
Discussion by councilman.
Well, let's go ahead.
Can we separate, can we separate them?
We'll do the first one. Let's just go back to no objection.
All right, we'll go by no objection for the, for the 5K run on 6/20/2015 for the Nelson County Community Clinic. That one we'll adopt. Now, discussion for the 6/20/2015 for the Main Street, Mardi Gras, I mean, I'm sorry, for the Mardi Gras on 5/15/2015.
The discussion is, it's a request to close the street for a Mardi Gras celebration, and I know we thought of it at least for one other concert during the year, the 4th of July, I guess. I just, I'm just wondering about going down that road and starting to close the streets, because people want to have a festival. Is that what we want to be doing? I guess it promotes downtown, I understand all that, but it's, it's a hassle to the traffic. Are the, are the merchants in downtown supporting this, and they want us to close the streets so this can happen? Does anybody know? Does anybody have any discussion on this with the minister? It's a question, does this, if nobody else has any problem with it, maybe I'm just, maybe I'm thinking about something dumb and dorky.
I think the Main Street Program Committee, I think they would be, I'm hoping that they would be in contact with the downtown merchants for this.
I hope, yes.
Especially when you consider that she is the director. She's doing what's in the best interest of the...
She has a very close relationship with the business team.
My concern is with that. With that, I'll make the motion to approve the Main Street, Mardi Gras request, 5/15/2015.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? Motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Don't oppose? Eyes have it? Okay, we'll move on to review of the minutes. If there's no objection, we will adopt a motion to approve the minutes of March 10th, 2015. Since there's no objection, the motion to approve the minutes is adopted by unanimous consent for the regular meeting of 3/10/2014. Financial report? Why, David, you have the floor, sir?
Honors, I have, is a recommendation that we be authorized to go to third building cycle. You would think that would be simple, we could do that administratively, but we've got so many ordinance that say you will bill on this date, that date, and the other date. So, what I'm asking tonight is, y'all approve a motion to authorize us to proceed on this, then we'll have to draft amendments to five different ordinances that say what date we're going to bill on. It's silly to say, be that specific in our ordinance, but we did it. I'll stop there. The reason for wanting to go to a third cycle is, we're billing 9,000 people on the first of the month, 4,500 on 15th. We can even out our work flow if we take all the cable-only customers out of that first stack and bill them on the 7th of the month. That way, we have a steady flow of customers each week. It's a, we've been talking about it, we were thinking about going to four cycles, this makes sense to do this now. I'll stop and ask for a motion to authorize this to the board. Or, questions?
Well, when you, when you switch to that side, of course, I can just do that, but when you switch to it, there's going to be some people that are lower bill, and somebody's going to be the higher bill. Higher, you know, work foot fee...
Higher, you know, work foot fee, which is going to do, we're going to send a notice a month ahead of time to those people that are affected. And the people affected will be customers that have nothing but cable and internet and/or internet. So they normally will get billed on the first of the month. In June, when we do this, or July, when we do it, on the first, they're going to get billed for seven days. A short bill. On the seventh, they're going to get billed for a full month to get them on this new cycle. We don't want to hit anybody with a bill that tired them up and say, hey, you're getting billed for five weeks instead of four. We'd rather do them for one week, a low bill, and then four weeks a regular bill. I think that will create less, uh, burden on the customer. And we're going to notify way ahead of time.
When you check, go to this side, you, you, the actuarial process, will that be same for customers paid, you know, some customers pay sometimes before end of month, sometimes different dates? Will, will that change?
But it, it, our billing now is done by neighborhoods.
Right.
If you live in this neighborhood, you get billed on the first, it's due on the fifteenth. If you live in these other neighborhoods, you're billed on the fifteenth, it's due on the thirtieth.
Right.
Cable-only customers live all over the place.
Right.
Some of them live in town, some of them live in Chaplain. So we will change their bill due date from the fifteenth to the twenty-first. That's when it's going to be due.
Okay.
And, and, I mean, yeah, you just have to do it that way. You've got to give them X number of days notice.
Hold your recommendation here.
That y'all, a motion, authorize the finance department to proceed with this third billing and prepare amendments for all of the necessary ordinances. You got that, though.
I will get the.
Just so I can understand, uh, Mike, the first, the seventh, the fifteenth, and it says or the twenty-first, that's.
What we, uh, we were undecided which of the dates to use. We decided the seventh is the best date to have the third billing cycle on.
Okay, so twenty-first is not considered.
Yeah, that's something in the future we may do. We, we would come back to, what you're authorizing is up to four cycles, we're only going to implement number three now.
Okay, that's what I was going to do, okay.
And the whole purpose is to level out work flow. So I would ask a motion to authorize this.
Talk for a session, talk for a court. Did you have a question? Don't confuse them. All right, the motion is, uh, to allow Mike to change the billing cycles, okay?
Well, we're lying in to prepare each ordinance changes to bring back the.
Which will be a later date. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, don't oppose? Eyes have it? Motion is adopted. B?
Okay, Mike? Oh, B, y'all, the way y'all have it on agenda, y'all got the Fire Foods and all that business. This is on your iPads also. I don't have an iPad, so I can't determine what's on it, what's not on y'all's. Fire Foods, when they were first recruited, were promised to won't have to pay property taxes for five years. They were billed and they paid their property taxes for five years, we owe them a refund. So I just want y'all to know I'm going to be writing that check. It's, it's ordained by you all a long time, by the city council a long time ago. It was in an uncodified ordinance, it got missed. Uh, we didn't know that was committed either. But it's due and we're going to pay it. And I just want y'all to know, I don't need approval on that. You've got an ordinance that said do it on, that's just for your information.
How many years has it been on?
Uh, they've been there, they've paid taxes six or seven years, they're doing a refund on the first five after the facility was completed.
They may assume taking that.
Uh, no, the ordinance says the first five years, we need to do it, because your assessment is different to your next five years. We need to do it on what the ordinance said. Because the property might be worth more today than it was when they built it. So we want to refund what they paid in those first five years, that's, that really has to be done there. Secondly, after the recent sale of industrial land, I got to reviewing an old file from archives, and it's this. By City Council Municipal Order from two thousand and four, I can get the exact year. The City Council agreed that once the city recouped X number of dollars from Wilson Park, all further proceeds would go to B I D C. So I'll be writing, will be writing a check to B I D C this week for three hundred and, roughly three hundred and forty-eight thousand, round figures. Again, I don't need approval, that's been authorized in this book by municipal order. There's been an agreement signed by the city and B I D C many years ago. So it's, y'all need to know.
And that, this is just a fast third, pardon me, it's a fast third.
Yeah, yeah. But I, I don't feel comfortable doing that kind of check without y'all's approval.
Well, that was mentioned in the meeting when Kim came, came and spoke with us. You were here, Mike, she mentioned that, so we were aware of that, of that part of it.
And then the third thing, I'm going to go back to that ordinance that exempts industries from property taxes. It's a, I think it was two thousand and four, it's very poorly written, it's very vague. It says, any industry that comes here, period. I'm recommending that you repeal that and direct staff to draft a new ordinance that's more perfectly worded and fits the need. If Ford Motor Company orders a supplier to locate in Bardstown, you don't need to give it on a tax ba, tax rebate. You want to use this to attract the industry that is not otherwise coming. This is a blank ordinance, it exempts them from taxes. Doesn't say what kind of taxes, it's very poorly written, I think the mayor, the mayor's encouraged. And I strongly recommend that y'all, uh, by motion, direct us to, well, number one, draft an ordinance to repeal that one. And then have staff work on one for the future that's built in conjunction with you all and deciding what it sends for really needed. There's nothing wrong with granting incentives, but do it specifically not for all of them.
During this process, I mean, we've seen there'd be, there's more coming to you all, uh, to, that we're going to clean up, that has to be reworded. And it's, uh, it's coming, but we're, we're getting, we're getting as, as we can get to them. I'll keep you informed as soon as, as soon as, uh, we get the list together.
Is that, uh, ordinance number eight O A?
Yeah. It's about a paragraph long. Shortest ordinance I think I've ever seen.
And you, the way that's always been used is but for that incentive, but the V I D C brings in here for the development cabinet. We wouldn't get it. Obviously, it's been an incentive earmarked for a specific, um, uh, address of their concern. So, and so is it incentive on them locating, but for that grant, they wouldn't have liked it.
Go back to my example of Ford ordering supplier to locate, we wouldn't need to get them themselves. So there are cases where you don't need to. And we shouldn't have an ordinance that just does it carte blanche. I mean, you should.
And you, and I don't think you want to give it to a manufacturing job that's only going to be ten people, five people maybe.
Well, you might, but that's for y'all to decide on a case-by-case basis, not a carte blanche.
Exactly.
Mayor, just as a point of reference, I did a little research, and I think it's, or one of the ordinances I found from two thousand and six regarding that was ordinance number D two zero zero six dash nine. And it's a repeat of the first one.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I saw that today.
I don't disagree with Mike's said, but he's sort of fair application where you're going to do the research.
Well, that's a recommendation. If y'all want us to proceed in that direction.
I'm going to have a, I'm going to get the vote. Imagine we're all in agreement to move forward with that.
Well, you speak as a council.
Because we're not, because we don't have to vote on a recommendation, or not, we'll vote on the amendment.
There's a sixth other ordinance that approved that.
Yeah.
But once you rewrite it, we have to prove it, right?
Absolutely. Well, the staff may recommend we don't need an ordinance like this, you need to do it on a case-by-case basis.
Right.
That's a possibility.
But the ordinance is to be rewritten, and is rewritten. I will bring it in front of you guys, and you will have to vote on it, so.
Do we need to repeal eight O A?
Not yet.
Not yet. It, it, it has to stand until we decide if we're going to rewrite it, or it's going to be, we're going to, we're going to do the ordinance status.
Even to repeal it, you've got to write an ordinance to repeal it.
To repeal it.
And I, I do think that should be done, but we don't have a written report. And then later on, the law will know. All right, the final part of my report, um, y'all wanted the budget started early, and the departments had started, um, some, um, some things y'all need to know ahead of time. You've all read about the gas tax. We're going to receive about seventy-five thousand dollars less in gas tax money next year. That all went to street payment. Uh, that's a significant drop, that's like a twenty-five percent cut. Uh, not a cut, just reduction, so just be aware of that. Occupational tax revenue may be up by that amount, so it's a watch out. It's a little early for the departments, most of them have gotten in and will start putting them together and get them out as soon as they can. And the last thing, the budget's going to need to be amended at least one more time this year. The things I know about are the land that we agreed to purchase down at the state park. It was budgeted at one dollar amount, the final price negotiation was another, so we've got to increase the budget to carry that. The pass-through to B I D C wasn't anticipated, it's not in the budget, we've got to put it in there. Uh, that's kind of routine. And there's a couple of other things that happened this year that are probably going to cause the department to go over. Police in particular had a big sewer issue, I think we talked about some time ago. I don't know any others right now, but I'm sure there are. And I don't want to, oh, never mind. I don't want to dump this on a successor. That's it.
Any other questions? We'll move to number eight ordinances. Mayor, excuse me, Mayor, I'd like to introduce proposed ordinance, B two thousand and fifteen, amended zoning regulations and ask for it to be read in court.
An ordinance relating to an ordinance amending and adopting amended zoning regulations for the city of Bardstown, Bluefield, Fairfield, New Haven, and Nelson County, Kentucky. By amending Article Five definitions and Article One General Zoning District Regulations. Whereas pursuant to K R F one hundred point two one one parentheses two, on February the twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen, the Joint City County Plan Commission held a public hearing, and subsequently on two twenty-four, two thousand and fifteen, the Plan Commission unanimously, unanimously voted to recommend approval of a proposed amendment to the zoning regulations for all of Nelson County. And whereas the proposed zoning regulation amendments will address the fence height revision and zoning compliance permit exception as well as the accessibility improvement definition and setback exception. Now therefore, the city of Bardstown, Kentucky does hereby ordain as follows. Section one, that Article Five definitions is hereby amended to create the definition of accessibility improvement and amend the definition of structure as set forth in the documents attached heretofore made a part hereof and incorporated by reference as if fully set forth. Insert accessibility improvement and unroofed and open structure, including a ramp or chairlift that number one allows persons with a physical disability access to a dwelling, and number two is exterior to a dwelling. Structure, anything constructed or erected, the use of which requires location on the ground or attached to something, having the location on the ground, but not including fences up to strike sixty inches, insert seven feet in height, or poles and, oh. Appartementes thereto, used for the provisions of public ut, utility, includes buildings and mobile homes. Section two, that Article Nine, General Zoning District Regulations nine point eight, special yard provisions subsection D is hereby amended to create an exception for accessibility improvements as set forth in the documents attached heretofore made a part of hereof and incorporated by reference as if fully set forth. Insert D, accessibility improvement exceptions. Accessibility improvements may extend or project within ten feet of front and rear property lines and within five feet of the side property lines. The accessibility improvement shall be permitted only for the access of a disabled resident of the dwelling and shall be removed if the dwelling is no longer occupied by a disabled resident. Accessibility improvements shall not be considered impervious area in the calculation of minimum open space. A variance shall not be required for accessibility improvements meeting these standards. However, the property owner shall be required to obtain a zoning compliance permit to ensure compliance with these standards. Disordinants or parts of ordinance in conflict herewith are repealed to the extent such conflict, disorderant shall be in full force and effect following complication as required by law.
Any questions on that? This doesn't require a vote. Any questions?
You got a question?
No, no questions on, on this at all? Uh, we'll go down to, uh, we'll go down to number nine. Reports of staff and committees, Councilman Butler, Safety Committee.
Uh, on three, twelve, and fifteen, we met, and all the, uh, committee members were present along with the Chief Police, Fire Chief, and some of his staff. Firstly, on, we talked about fire hydrants, we have non-working fire hydrants in the city. Uh, the Fire Chief addressed that issue and, uh, said, uh, they're going to be tabled to be worked on. A lot of this stuff is in the Nelson County Gazette standard, I'll go over the bicycle patrol. That was, uh, community orientated policing policy, I was trying to get that re-implemented. The chief was in concurrence on it, we're going to try to get that going by spring for, to get the, get it back downtown and, uh, back into working and, and the police, uh, functions. Uh, the budget, uh, police budget, the chief addressed that, we're going to try to get stop sticks for all the units in the city, or in the, all the city units. You never know what unit's going to be out and, uh, pursuit. We just had one come through the middle of town, very detrimental, we've seen some bad pursuits, I've been in them myself. And they, one crashed into our courthouse one time, killed an individual. Uh, so with the stop sticks in their unit, we can stop them before they get into the city limits. And that's the main objective. Mayor gave us some, uh, update on his, uh, hiring board. It's still in progress, it's still in work, it's still going to happen. We're waiting on some, uh, comments or opinions back from the Department of League of City Council. Uh, clarification on the status of the board and the form any of it. Chief Martin hired, gave a great presentation, a PowerPoint presentation, he had some handouts for the rest of the council. If you weren't at the meeting, uh, it's well worth looking at. Talked about the merger, talked about the EMS training for firefighters. We've, uh, suggested some of the police officers also go to the EMS training, so the first responders will have EMS training on the scene. Police and fire, most times, the first one to see before EMS gets there. Uh, so they're working on a class for it. Uh, City County Volunteer Fire Department merger, if you have any questions about that, that's in prosper, in working progress. Uh, the chief, when it gets to him, he'll clarify on that. Chief Police brought forth, uh, the body cams. We're in the final stages of narrowing down what type of body cam that we're going to go to. Y'all worked it into this year's budget. Needs to happen, and I feel like it's going to happen. It's a good thing, once we get a policy and procedure in place and get the money and funding for the body cams. And code red notification, this is a notification, uh, that you can get for emergencies or something. This is a notification, uh, that you can get if there's emergencies or something in the city. Any questions or comments?
I have a question. I'd like to make a recommendation to the council and the mayor. We have some funds balanced in our continuing fund. Mayor, you have balance and the councilmen will have a balance. I'd like to give Police Department a percent and give the Fire Department a percent. The Police Department, that would help towards the expense of the body cam. So that would be my recommendation, Mayor. Some of your funds and some of the council balances we have.
Uh, I'd like to give a total account of how much the cameras are. I think we're waiting on prices of, because they not only buy the cameras, but they have to buy a server where all the information is. And then, uh, our new city attorney has to evaluate, uh, the open records, uh, policy on, on this information. And, uh, so can we, uh, with your permission, can we wait on that? Yeah, we can wait on that, but I just... I understand, and I, I concur, I believe, so. But I, I'd like to, I'd like to waste some... That may not be in the budget. Thank you, Councilman Lillian. We appreciate that.
I have a question, Mayor. Uh, Mr. ... Councilman Buckland, you, you mentioned something about some stop sticks. Is that what you said?
Yeah, stop sticks is, uh...
Those are things you lay in the road?
Right. Every unit would carry them. They're triangle type stop, uh, the spike. It's a hollow spike and it penetrates the tire and then slowly and safely lets the air out of the tires. A lot of times the tire ruptures, but I mean, that's the safest way that we can deploy it. Uh, the last pursuit come in Springfield Road. Uh, it was a perfect opportunity to deploy stop sticks there at, uh, uh, Spring Hill subdivision. Could've gone and stopped before we come through town. It's a very dangerous thing when you got pedestrians in the way and then most time that turns into bad situations. We don't want them in the city.
If, uh, if you recall, the la, the pursuit for that was where the gentleman was pursued all the way from Jersey County to, uh, Bardstown. And Rick made a, a, a call to stop him at the Old Delante store. And they had to use a, they used a vehicle to push him off the roadway. Uh, you know, that's an added cost to the city and to taxpayers. In this last pursuit, it did go through the middle of town and luckily it was cold and no one was there. And here it is, it's gonna be summertime and hopefully this town will be full of tourists and, and, uh, local community, uh, on the streets. And we just, we don't need that to happen. Hopefully we can have these in the corner and they will be deployed when necessary.
We currently have some. We, I mean, it's not like it's something new. We have them, uh, each supervisor has one on each shift. But, uh, you know, with the shifts that we work now, uh, supervisor or that stop tick individual may not be working that long. So he's kinda merciful, either the county police or the state police. If you're lucky, they have a stop tick system. But there's, it's a smaller unit, but it's more, it's just as effective. Can be utilized and put in each unit.
You have a question? Councilman Hagan, you have the floor. The Annexation Committee meeting, please.
The Annexation Committee now on the eighteenth. And per our, uh, meeting on the twenty-eighth, where we talked about these four possible annexation areas, we agree with a concentrate on one area. So our constant, our discussion, uh, centered on the neighborhood subdivision, Kevin Hill Warehouse is on Gilkey Run, McCallum Avenue, Barton Lake, and the required strip of land on nearby properties needed to tie together with individual properties. And we agree that we've, we're gonna, uh, a recommendation is that we start the economic analysis of those areas so we can present that to the council with a full recommendation. So, uh, I assume that's taking place. And what I would recommend is that, uh, maybe the next working session, we can put the map up and start getting some of these details so we can show everybody exactly what, uh, what we're talking about. So that's, you know, that's really, we, we just side look at the economic impact of that before we make the recommendation to actually pursue the annexation. Let's hear this.
I have a question.
Quick, Mr. Councilman.
I would like to see this annex analyzed and evaluate growth and net. Include all expenses. Research and streets. Are there any improvements need to be done? Garbage pickup. In the past, garbage pickup has been in conflict with the city government. And I think we need to work some hours with the county government. Distillers. Will we create a proper employment related with the distillery? More expense to the distillery? That's my comment.
Well, uh, Francis, the, the recommendation is to do just that, as far as the economic analysis. That's what that would, that, that...
It has to...
The cost and the, and the, uh, income stream.
Right.
That's exactly, will be presented by, developed and presented. That's part of the...
Right. But in the meantime, will you negotiate with the county? The county will give you some feedback.
Negotiate with the county, you're up.
On garbage pickup.
Just sit in the back, Howard.
I know, but in the time that you're in there, you have a garbage pickup. In the past, city had trucks out there picking up garbage. County had trucks picking up garbage. So something that did work out. Very important for this annex. I mean, grand name. County is picking up garbage then. And the city go in, pick it up. The county goes, send trucks up there. You have conflict. I think it's something that should be worked out. It has been worked out in the past. But I guarantee we need to work with that.
Councilman Lillian, I, I actually had a discussion with, uh, County Attorney, if you want today. We touched on it. But I didn't wanna go into great details. That was one of the subjects that we touched on. There has been in the past, uh, agreement. Mike, if you can kind of verify that about, about the other, finally, we had about garbage pickup in, uh, Oakwood and we, we do the billing for so much or...
Uh, there was a lawsuit after the last annexation. We agreed to settle that lawsuit. The agreement was because we, for our garbage bill, provide bulky item pickup and leaf pickup and something else. The agreement settling that lawsuit says that the county will pay us X dollars per customer. They'll keep picking them up. They'll keep charging them, but they'll give us so many dollars per customer and we'll do the bulky item pickup and the leaf pickup. I don't quote me in a dollar math because I, I didn't come here. But that's been, for those neighborhoods, that's been settled and it's working.
So we, so we, thank you for asking that and it worked, but we had a, we discussed that very lightly today. And, uh, and as soon as we get into more of this and the annexation meeting, you are all its councilmembers, uh, that will be part of this discussion. But, but I did touch on it today.
Okay.
Brad, what is the time for it?
Well, I don't know, to be honest with you. I was about to ask Larry, but I don't see Larry.
He's right about you.
He's blending in. Larry, if I, if I could take on the spot and ask you of how long that analysis is going to take? Would, would you care to give us a second?
Uh, we can try to have, uh, most of it done by the, by the working, is that next week?
April seventh. April seventh, two weeks.
Yeah, we should, we should have something by then.
You gonna analyze and evaluate all, all what I indicated in one week?
I can take longer, so I...
We can do it in one week. God bless.
Two weeks, right there. Well, a lot of it will, will have to do with, uh, um, the, the schedule, uh, schedules of public works and engineering with a lot of, you know, I can, I can get the income side pretty close by then, but there, there may be other departments that, uh, that maybe will have their own schedules.
And at the meantime, are you gonna go out, do a survey, investigation of what improvement need to be done or something? Are you gonna do that also?
As soon as the, as soon as the boundaries are set, then, and, and we're currently agreeing on all the boundaries, uh, by myself, if you wanna ride with me. And that's the opportunity to buy my lunch, by the way. If you wanna, if you wanna ride with me, be respectful. Well, we can look at some roadways and, uh, and, and to kind of evaluate those. Of course, engineering will do that, but, uh, uh, we can do that.
What's the methodology?
Speak, Mr. Brad.
In our new municipal order two thousand and thirteen, Frank. Now, uh, when we're in a discussion, there's no, uh, there's no questions from the, from the audience out there, just the city council. Attention. Larry Green? Larry Green, though?
Uh, no, sir.
Jessica? Ms. Tracy? You got it, okay? Mike?
Oh, thanks.
Larry?
One of the things I saw in the newspaper was, uh, that I'll bring up. It was, uh, the county passed a rule for developments, new subdivision streets, where they had like a fifty percent rule of build out to, uh... We've had this in the past where a street failed and the developer agreed to repair the street up to some of these, but they, they passed something that I think's a good move. And that is if a subgrade fails and the street fails, the developer will, um, repair it up to a solid line or through a certain build out. And I think it's something the city should have to protect this from, uh, failing streets that weren't built right to go in. And we put the amount of incentive on the developer to properly build the street. Instead of changing, they proposed changing the thickness of the, of the pavement design and also a subgrade. Instead of doing that, they just opted out, it seems, if I understand it right, just to put the burden back on the developer to take care of that street for a while. And that seemed to be, well, I was kind of fond of the move and I think we should adopt that. So, any help? Talk more about in the committee.
Uh, I just take a minute to say I appreciate your counsel and help in bringing that for the Safety Committee meeting. And for the councilmembers that were unable to attend, uh, we've got that information that we will get to you before you leave tonight. The bridge is kind of full, so I won't take the time passing it out now. Uh, but we just wanna be proactive as we move into the budget season to discuss, uh, with you exactly what the Fire Department employees are doing, um, how they're, uh, stacked up against other competitive departments or comparative departments with us. Uh, we're very excited being moving forward, uh, into the, uh, P M T train. We have the EMS director here tonight who works very closely with you. I want to appreciate all your help in that, Joe. Uh, and also, uh, there's information in the package that we give to you about, uh, mergers. And what I want the council to understand is we wanted to take that to the Safety Committee and let the council know and the public as well that what we're talking about here with the merger is only to put out a scope of work for consultants to give us pricing back so that we can get that pricing worked into the budgets because they have to, you know, it's going to affect two budgets, the Fire Department, Nelson County Volunteer Fire Department and the City of Kentucky. To do consultant work to see if the best road is to merge those departments in some way or how to structure those departments. We've worked so closely together over the years and most of you in here probably either are allies or have worked so seamlessly, uh, that they're one. So it's basically administrative that we're looking at. I just wanted the coun, council to know that that was going out before you heard on the street that they're out looking for this, for merger and that it's, uh, completely disclosed to the public too that, uh, you know, no changes are being made at this time. Fire departments aren't going anywhere. Uh, we're gonna be there for this, so just wanna take many time to let you know that. And councilmembers, let's say, I will get you the packets before you leave tonight. I'll leave that information out.
On this, on this merger bill, uh, right after, uh, we're doing the fourth election, I did meet with the, uh, chief and some of his staff about this merger. And I, and I know it kind of, it has been here once before, I think, uh, so, and this way we're gonna, we're gonna go all the way. We're gonna push it to the point to, it is there, it is or it isn't. And, uh, that's, you know, I'm not gonna let it rest. And, uh, I pushed hard. Chief will tell you that every day I'm, I'm on and I'm asking, so, uh, we, we gotta have an answer to this, to that question, so. Thank you for your patience and I will give you updates as I get them from the... Police?
He says he's good.
Ray, how you doing, sir? Uh, I've been, maybe for me a minute. Did you, uh... Thank you, gentlemen, trip seven twenty-one, seven twenty-one? Thank you, sir. Chief, can you, or, uh, Ray, could you, uh, enlighten us on the, on the, uh, updates or developments and, and making people aware of their surroundings on the recent things that's happened? What, like robberies and, uh, and, and crime? Oh, okay. We're just investigating the robbery, the two robberies. Uh, I've been, uh, dispatch was, uh, you know, putting out the call. I've been complaining about that, they don't put the calls out fast. Nine minutes delay before the call is worn out, so. A nine minute... First one, I think nine, so then the second one, nine minutes before the calls are put out. It's a call taker, start the call taker, put in the computer, and then you put it out. Listen, nine minutes delay? I'll look into that. Thank you. Thank you, sir. New business. I got the, uh, new appointment, the Chief Financial Officer, Tracy Putch, Putch, uh, Putton. And I'd like to introduce Tracy, please. I have, uh, Mike is, Mike is retiring at the end of this month.
Next week.
Next week? You didn't have to push it, so... So I've been, uh, through a, uh, detailed interviews, discussions, and, uh, I still think, uh, Tracy is, uh, she's good for this job. And, uh, she has a big task ahead of her and I think she's qualified to do it. And I wanna welcome her stepping up and, uh, putting mud shoes. I need, uh, and I guess at this point I'd like to have the council's approval, so. I make the motion to approve Tracy's next to the Chief Financial Officer. Just take the motion. Discussion? Motion is to, uh, uh, to assess into the, uh, position of the Chief Financial Officer. All in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it? Motion is adopted. Now welcome Tracy. Uh, number B, a new business, uh, the new appointment, uh, Michael Johnson of the Human Rights Commission to, uh, take the place of the unexpired term of Luke Barlow for three one two thousand and sixteen. If there's no objection, we'll make a, we'll adopt the motion to approve the new appointment of Michael Johnson to the Human Rights Commission.
Is he here today?
Yes. And since there's no objection, the motion is adopted by unanimous consent. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Johnson. And thank you, Mr. Johnson. Uh, the section C in two thousand fifteen, Bourbon Festival, the expansion of the drinking area for Spirit's Garden. Uh, and I want to introduce, uh, Eddie Masterson in Tiger Houston. Does he speak English? Or is it, or is it Eddie, is Eddie speaking English?
Tiger, we'll take your back.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor's counsel, I appreciate it. Well, I, I think I provided the fire department, we were all, uh, given. Um, we, uh, first of all, I'm the chairman of the Bourbon Festival. I live in Bloomfield, actually, um, I work here in Bardstown. We, uh, the last year, we had fifty-four thousand people attend the festival. It's been a wonderful addition to this county for the past twenty-three years. And, uh, and we get, uh, there's loads, loads of comments, mostly positive. However, one of the most, the ones with comments we received negative more than anything is the spirit garden situation here at the, at the festival grounds out here, outside of here. Now, we've done better, we moved from the, what I used to call the prison yard here, uh, which was the ball field, down to the city hall yard here, and it's worked well for the last couple of years. However, it just has become, um, it's just very crowded down there. And what we're proposing is to make the festival grounds themselves, which is basically this area back to the swimming pool over to the city hall, to the fire department, and over the edge of St. Joe here to the history. Completely enclosed, and have four separate points of ingress and egress, four to five points of ingress and egress, and allow drinking inside this contained area. That is what most festivals do, uh, in Kentucky, if I attend, anything held in Louisville downtown, whether that's at the waterfront park, or at the bill, or the forecasted use of festival, the waterfront concerts, anything that's held in Louisville right now, that they have open container in this particular area. Meaning you don't have to be designated to one service particular section. How we propose to do this is to, um, still keep the spirit garden area there. It is an ID, you have to show an ID, proof of ID to get there. It will be banned in some manner to identify that you're twenty-one years old. You can still buy the spirits in that particular area, but you can bring them out onto the grounds. That way you can stand in front of the stage, watch music rather than back in the background looking at things. You can mingle the grounds, you can go to the booths, you can visit the exhibitions, et cetera, that are set up with a drink in your hand, but it will be contained in this area. Whatever the city recommends for that particular fencing, we, we plan on fencing it like we have previously. A lot of these grounds are fenced already, so we'll just be putting a pertinent to these particular fencing areas right now. We've discussed this at the city council meeting on, no, I mean, excuse me, at the Bourbon Festival, uh, meeting on several occasions uh, for the past couple of years, and, um, and I do believe, I didn't, uh, Chief McCutcheon's not here tonight, but I have, I have spoken to him on occasion myself, and he was, um, I, I do believe he is in favor of this as well. I don't want to speak for him. So anyway, we, uh, don't expect an answer tonight on this. Uh, give the, um, city, particularly the, uh, the new attorney, uh, Mr. Butler, in time for golfing, or the safety and your, uh, your risk management to, to take a look at this. But we think it really would be better for the festival, we think it will cause much less problem, actually. And, uh, it would make it much more enjoyable experience for our visitors. One last bit, you know, a lot of places want this festival, and, uh, and it's, it's been, uh, you would not believe the, the requests we get, and we have them, and Louisville really would like to have this festival. So we want to try to keep this as friendly as possible for our visitors to come in, get an experience like they would have anyplace else in the United States. Appreciate your consideration.
Hard question, yes, so you still just have the one area of combined drinks?
Yes, yes. That's what we're proposing. And that keeps it, that keeps it real, rather than having to sit by far, you know, having one area at a location to have the same, you know, same way we do it before, ticket sales, ID. The difference would be that we would ban people. They risk ban some sort, that way, if there's someone out in the grounds drinking, then the law enforcement can identify if they're not, if they deny, if they don't have a ban.
Would you propose to check coolers and purses and stuff for alcohol?
We don't, well, we haven't done it now.
Well, it's about the can't drink out of the grounds now, so if somebody's drinking beer out of the grounds, we know they're subject, you know, that's what. But I'm just thinking about how, how.
Well, you know, I was.
Before you take that.
Right, well, I was down, you know, on these grounds Friday, Saturday night last year, twelve nights. And I don't think there's that many coolers, I don't think you're gonna handle it.
But there'd be no coolers allowed, right? You have our checkpoints, you couldn't come in with a.
There you go. Eddie, Eddie is the head of it, he's been on the board, he's been on the board longer than I have.
Well, that answers that question.
Yeah, he couldn't really prove it. Yes.
Uh, all the drinks will be in cups?
Yes.
I said, no bottles, no cans, something?
No, cans, bottles, so, we'll, we'll have to do that. The, the cans, uh, you know, we'll, we'll see that, whatever, whatever the regulation is, we want to, we want to work.
Do you think you'd have about fifty more trash cans?
Well, and spirit garden right now, when you're walking around, it doesn't make any difference if there's trash cans at all, because everything's on the ground. And the reason for that is because you're in there like this, and people just don't care.
I just anticipate a lot of cups on the ground.
Well, there might be, and that's why we give the.
We'd have less problem.
I understand. You're like, you'll keep walking around with cups and having to take a call with the parents.
Yeah, we'll have, yeah, we'll, we'll, you know, we'll double trash cans, that's not an issue. The, the fencing, the, the, we'll have security, plan on having armed security, they're not armed, people aren't armed security, that's.
If they're uniformed, they better be armed. But, like, y'all usually, y'all usually have these boy scouts pick up all the stuff, so they, that gives them, and.
Pretty good, pretty good amount of money, we can.
Yes, exactly, and that, and that, that's, that's good, that they do it that way.
It's gotten so big that the, the beer garden has created a problem, when you can corral, corral up all the drugs and all the drinkers and, and that's where most of our problems were, when we would get calls.
I know.
It wasn't out among, and once you let them wander and, and relax, you have a better environment.
I think it, I think it, it actually leads to less drinking. You know, you're in there right now, you know, you can't, you gotta finish that, or, you know, you can't go anywhere else with it. Now, if you get a drink, legally walk out.
But before they're released on the, on Fifth Street, you're not gonna allow cups to go over this street, up, up, uh, Main Street?
Any, any other, we're gonna have it, fortified, five points? Uh, five points of, of entry and, and exit.
And there'll be someone there?
Someone there to knock it out, yeah. Any of the festivals, for example, if you use the forecast, the forecast is a very good example in Louisville. That's about thirty-eight drinks a can down there, primarily between these two ways, and you can have a drink, or, 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 whether it's alcohol or not.
Uh, historically, you've been letting people have their beer cans, right?
No.
You've changed that?
Never, it's always been inside the spirit's garden, that's the, we've never had it at all.
Unless they snuck to the.
Now, now here, yeah, now, the Fourth of July concerts, different, different story, down on Main Street. I think that has been allowed, I'm, I'm not sure, but that was one of the things we were. We just think it'd make it much better, uh, issues of festival, it'd make it much better, it'd probably make it safer. Thank you very much, appreciate your attention.
Do you have special permit with that, uh, Kona Ice mobile food vendor?
Could I let the new council members, uh, just a little bit of history in regard to, uh, mobile food vendors? We started this in two thousand and fourteen at a request of a couple of people who were starting to bring mobile food vending apparatuses into Bardstown. So we created an ordinance that pertains to the youth, uh, of, allowing these mobile food vendors, um, certain areas throughout town. But each and every time there is a request, there has to be a, an actual permit that is presented to the council for approval. So just to let you know, but this is the first one for this season, and we'll definitely see quite a few from Kona Ice, but just to let you know.
If there's no objection, we'll adopt the motion to approve the special permit for Kona Ice. Okay, since there's no objections, the motion is adopted by unanimous consent. Thank you, guys. E, the municipal order M two thousand fifteen dash oh six. It was the, uh, regular scheduled historical review board meeting, and I'll ask Bobby to read the municipal order, please.
Whereas the historical review board was established on March twelfth, nineteen sixty-eight, where meetings were held by the call of the board chairman. And whereas the mayor and the Bardstown City Council wished to establish a regular meeting schedule on a monthly basis for the historical review board. Now therefore be it ordered by the city council, the City of Bardstown Commonwealth of Kentucky, that the historical review board of the City of Bardstown shall have regularly scheduled meetings on the third Tuesday of each month at six thirty P.M. in the Bardstown City Council chambers located at one sixteen North Fifth Street, Bardstown, Kentucky, and that the board will consist of five citizens appointed by the mayor with approval of the Bardstown City Council, or until their successors are appointed, each serving a term of three years.
Mayor, I make the motion to adopt the municipal order number in two thousand fifteen dash oh six.
Discussion?
Please, sir.
I'll have a second. Discussion? Motion is on the table for the, to adopt the, uh, municipal order M two thousand fifteen dash oh six. And, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it? Motion is adopted. We have, uh, municipal order two thousand fifteen dash oh eight, which is the banks authorizing signatures. And I ask Bobby to read that municipal order, please.
Whereas Mike Abel will retire on March thirty-first, two thousand fifteen, and whereas the Bardstown City Council approved the appointment of Tracy Hudson as the chief financial officer effective upon the retirement of Mike Abel. Now therefore be it hereby ordered and authorized that all signature cards on all City of Bardstown, and these the city bank accounts, city safe deposit outlets and city investments be changed effective April first, two thousand fifteen, to reflect that the following are the only persons authorized to sign documents with any two of the following to sign for all withdrawals of checks. John Royalty, mayor, Tracy Hudson, chief financial officer, Robert L. Simpson, councilman, William Buckman, councilman.
Mayor, I, I move to, um, make a motion that we accept municipal order M two thousand fifteen dash two oh eight, which identifies the individual that are authorized to sign financial documents, and I yield the floor for a second. I'll second. Thank you. All right. Motion is to adopt the municipal order two thousand fifteen oh eight, bank authorizing signatures with the authorized people, uh, as stated, and, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is adopted. Uh, G, which is municipal order two thousand fifteen dash oh nine, the amendment to conduct city council meetings, and I'll ask Bobby to read the municipal order, please.
A municipal order amending the conduct of city council meetings established in municipal order number two thousand thirteen dash nineteen. Now therefore be it ordered by the City of Bardstown Commonwealth of Kentucky that the conduct of city council meetings, section two, agenda C, format subsection one, A, B, C, and F, be changed to reflect the following. Agenda, format, C, A, insert, receive input from the public. The presiding officer will allow the public to make the council aware of their community concerns. Input received from the public will be, will be, will allow the city government to be proactive regarding community issues. Change, excuse me, strike A, replace it with B, strike the letter B, insert it with C, strike C. Reports of officers and committees. The mayor, appointed city officials, and city council committee representatives may report. Items suggested for action by the mayor or appointed city officials may be taken up at time, at this time, as long as the motion has been made and seconded by members of the city council. Under F, city council member comments. City council members are permitted to offer comments or observations about the community and operations of city business. Insert, when public input relates directly to operation of city government or city business, the council as a legislative body or any individual council member who feels qualified to comment or enter into a discussion with the citizen may do so.
I really don't think that we need to change the order.
Want to read a comment?
If, if you'd like to.
Need a, need a, need a motion in a second, then I'll, then I'll open it for discussion. Thank you, Councilman Simpson, second.
Second.
Okay, county, open, thank you. Now, discussion? Now, Mr. Simpson, you have the floor.
I, I, I don't think we need to, uh, change the municipal order myself. We all remember, uh, and some of the reason is, the reason this, uh, municipal order was enacted to start with, uh, was because, uh, we had some issues that came before, uh, Mayor Shackles. A couple of issues that I don't think that a mayor or a councilman deserved to be talked to like this was that night, and we all probably remember, especially the older ones. Uh, I don't think that's a, 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 a good situation for the council to be in. And as far as, uh, the, the, I think, Elton addressed, is that as far as being able to answer or, uh, address anything that, uh, a constituent or someone brings up to us, uh, I think I don't need a municipal order to answer a question or address it. And, uh, so, under, that's the reason I don't think we need to change it. That's my opinion.
Councilman, have you? I agree with that, uh, this first input, first change really doesn't make any, any change, you know. We're starting to receive input from the government, uh, allow the public to, to, to get input. I don't see how that's gonna change anything. And I agree with Bobby on the last one, but, uh, seeing, this is city council, we have our city councilmen, we don't need anybody's permission or a municipal order to speak. If somebody from the audience asks us a question, we choose to speak, or have a good conversation, I guess that's okay. That's not something I choose to do, I'm gonna do it offline. And I certainly don't want the mayor entering into a discussion, because as I've said many, many times, this is a city council meeting, I like to conduct city council business, and I don't want the mayor having his conversation with people when we sit there and, and listen, so. And I have some other thoughts on this, I've got quite a bit to say about this. There, on our plate right now, we have a yearly budget we're gonna have to pass by Bill O'Ferret. We have six more meetings before that happens. There are annexation discussions, we have interlocal agreement on the recreation board, which expires July the first. We have to have something in place before then. Uh, interlocal agreement on dispatch board expires September twenty-third, that's something we have to take care of. Uh, we said we're gonna develop a three-year plan, that's something we're working on. As Marlon talked about, we're gonna have discussion about merging fire departments. Uh, these zoning regulation changes are gonna be coming, I just got out of a, hour and a half meeting, Bill and I did over the planning of zoning. They're gonna be coming hot and heavy, there's a lot of zoning issues we're gonna be having to look at. Uh, we're gonna be setting fire duty tax rates later this year, we're gonna be talking about water sources. Those are all very important things that we should be working on, that's our responsibility to work on those. The, there's thirteen thousand people in the city of Bardstown, and I suspect every one of them, whether they know it or not, they want us to be working on those things. That's, that's our important part of our job. Uh, the, uh, they want to have a recreation department with their kids, when they call nine one one, they want the fire department to show up, or the priest to show up. They depend on us to do that, so that's what we need to be working on. And regarding to this, uh, proposed change for the municipal order, changing the way we receive input from the public input, I bet there's not a hundred people in the city of Bardstown even know we're talking about it, and that care that we're doing. And because of that, and the public, these other issues you talked about, I'd like for us to be standing on that. I think it's our responsibility to do those things, and I think that, that's what our people expect us to do. I know that there are individual councilmen who want to change this format, and I respect a person who has conviction on something. But I've worked with four mayors now, and none of them have done or do things exactly the way I would do it. And that's just the way things are. And I, but I think we need to put that personal, uh, need aside. And I, but I think we need to put that personal need aside and concentrate on these things that the citizens of Bardstown want us to work on. So I respectfully request that the council members who want to change this, let's leave it as it is. This warning doesn't really change anything, I don't think. If you want to talk question development, you don't need a municipal order to do that. We can't take away the chair's responsibility to keep order in the meeting, we can't require the chair to do some, some of these things. It just, it becomes very kludgy. So I'd like to set this aside and start working on all of these very important things that we need to do. If, if this comes up for a vote, I'll go against it, I don't think we really need it to accomplish anything we've accomplished. And even those little nuances that we individually don't like, I'd like for us to just live with it and, and get on with the important stuff.
Let me make my other comment. To Fred and Bobby, you educate us, you do not need a new car to speak. This language has been in there for three years, Bobby. City council, city council comments, you've been abiding by this for three years. Now you're indicating you don't need a municipal office to speak, it's been an ass. So it says here, and here, city council members are committed to offer comments all based about the community, in operation of city, city business, you've been buying by this off.
And I want to buy by today?
You've been buying by it for three years, and that has not been changed. That has not been changed. So anyway, I'm ready for a vote, Mayor, we've been kicking this around too long, I'm ready to vote. And I would like to put a motion on the floor, to vote.
Hang on, the motion's been made, but I don't, there's still more discussion.
Fred, you made a lot of valid points, and I agree with you on almost all of them. But my memory is correct, the mayor is the one who put input from the public actually on the agenda, and it was not in the municipal order coming out of the station.
Well, that was my suggestion that the beer garden would take me. But we didn't take no action on it, verbal information. Anytime that you have verbal information, my word, though, in the garbage, it's no good. No action was taken because it was a work session.
Well, gentlemen, I have to interject at this point and reflect that there are several agenda items that are not specified in the municipal order, such as cemetery D, such as financial reports, such as ordinances, such as correspondence. All of those situations are added on for part of city business that we have to conduct. But it's not specified in the municipal order. So when Councilman Hagan requested receive input from the public, it was in reference to the recognition of groups or individuals. He wanted to emphasize that he'd like to not only just recognize, but to receive input.
Well, we didn't get a consensus on it.
It was a working session.
I know it was a working session, but it wasn't a, a consensus.
And I stand corrected, I thought the mayor could do it.
Thank you, Councilman Williams, for clarifying that. Well, is that how, so I, I'm gonna ask for a vote to where I can put this municipal order two thousand thirteen to a, to its grave, because we've been discussing it since I took office since January the first, and we have wasted nearly three months on this discussion of this municipal order, and we have cheated the taxpayers of what we're supposed to be doing. So I would, I'm asking for a vote.
Let me make one more comment.
Just, just one more thing. We'll put this to a vote, and we'll, and we're gonna put it to rest. Because we have to get on with city business, we have to do city business, and I agree with Fred, the taxpayers expect it. And we've got so much business going on that, to be honest with you, we can't tie three more months out of this municipal order, it's ridiculous. Here, Councilman Williams?
When you have a municipal order, you cannot add new language to this order. I mean, that's, that's been my problem from day one. I mean, if you got a municipal order, you gotta follow rules. If you're not gonna follow rules, then I'm gonna just throw it all away. It, it do not indicate in here that, that council members do not have no discussions with the public. It do not indicate in here city business only. I'm just, hey, your kid can read it on Saturday, that's not language, not in it. That's been my problem. How could you put new language in this municipal order that's not there? That's one of my problems.
And if I could just make one other comment, Mayor. I don't think, saying we, I can't, have to bear, we achieved the taxpayer. I don't think, I don't think that's exactly correct. We've been, been discussing city business, we're trying to figure out a way where everybody understands how we're gonna, you know, draw municipal and draw business. So I don't think we achieved it.
Yeah, well, I do, because this was voted in, we voted for it in two thousand thirteen, it wasn't ever enacted until I come into office, so. Again, I'm asking for a vote to put this to bed, and we're done with this, and got to go on with city business.
I would like to slip the motion over.
Motion's already done. To amend municipal order two thousand thirteen.
Is it motion up there?
Yeah.
Yeah, the motion is second.
Right, is there any more, any more discussion? Well. Let's vote, let's get this over with, and see how that stands, and we'll, and we got a little vote, we can't come back without this.
Robert's rules, question? Of my understanding that anyone who made a motion had to be in favor of the motion, they could just make a motion for discussion, am I correct? Now, it's my understanding, someone made a motion, they may not support it.
Well, maybe they can change their mind in the meantime.
That, that's why we had this discussion, because, now, is my correctness wrong, am I correct or am I wrong?
When you bring a motion to, for, when you make a motion, you move to bring the subject up for discussion.
But are you supposed to be in favor of the motion when you do that?
I don't see why we would have that.
But I thought we had a conversation over that.
If, if that was the case, then the only three people that were making motions that I see is Fred, Bobby, and Bill, and Ken, and you. And, you know, I just, I don't agree with that.
Well, what is the motive? Can we tell you that?
The motion is to accept a municipal order that you, that you, in two thousand fifteen, well, the municipal order two thousand thirteen dash nineteen. You made, you made, your motion was in section F, Councilman Williams was in the format C, one, section A. So motion's on the table, okay, and, and the motion is to adopt the municipal order of two thousand fifteen dash nine. Okay, section A and section F. All in favor?
To adopt it.
To adopt that motion, all in favor?
As amended, as amended.
As amended.
And what about, um, when the strike through?
That is covered under your, under this municipal order, two, the two thousand fifteen dash nine, it's the amendment, it does the whole, it does everything, we've just been discussing what you've read here.
Okay, well, I understand, I understand, Mayor, I'm just saying, I'm not trying to be argumental.
No.
Want to make sure that I'm clear on what I'm voting for. The, the strike throughs would have to be part of that also, correct?
Correct.
Okay, then, and we're talking about section E, the reports of officers and committees.
C.
All right.
On strike through C.
Yeah, strike through C.
I think what, I think what it's, I mean, if I can jump in here, it looks like to me that what it says is that this municipal order M two thousand fifteen oh nine includes both underlines, which would be additions, and then the strike throughs, which would be deletions. So if you vote for this, you're voting for both, so be very clear that if you vote, you are voting to take both actions, so.
So I, what I.
To adopt this as it's shown.
I want to, uh, well, if I could. What I think the motion would actually be. Well, the motion is to, uh, I'm sorry. Well, if I get Bobby to repeat his motion, that's what I mean. Because he made the motion, am I correct, am I correct, Bobby? Did you make the motion?
Well, I made it. I made a motion to have the vote, motion to discuss it.
Okay, the motion to discuss. Okay, that's where I got confused.
And I think, uh, who, who's second?
I don't know. I think Fred.
I understand.
Miss Covering?
So now, uh, we done that.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
So really, we have had a motion on, the main motion, we have had a main motion. And I.
I read the motion of, of what you want to vote on, this, this municipal order, two thousand fifteen dash nine.
If that's, if that's the motion that Councilman Simpson made, then it needs, there needs to be a motion to accept it as shown or not accepted.
All right, you want me to, are you gonna make that motion?
Mr. Simpson, would you like to withdraw your motion?
I will.
Thank you, sir.
Since you don't need a motion to discuss anyway, it's a moot point.
That's why I have to be fixed.
Well, yes or no? Go ahead.
All right. All right, so, um, I move to amend municipal order number M two thousand fifteen oh nine as stated in our, in our materials. And I yield the floor for a second.
Second.